Mr. Penlon, how's your, how's your boss today?
Which one?
Well, you're right. We all have different levels.
Stephanie is good.
Well, you, you answered correctly, David. I'm impressed.
Mr. Allen, how you doing?
Doing okay. How about you?
Good, thank you.
Good morning.
Hi, Doug. How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Say hi to him while I can. How are you?
Good seeing you, friend.
Bruce is not supposed to be here tonight.
He may be at a conference.
Yeah, Ballard, I thought.
He is out of town.
Meeting with this.
I thought I remembered him staying.
He wasn't here Monday for that other meeting.
No.
I was a member since, uh, God, ever since I came on this board. And, uh, she really helped me a lot. Thirty-five dollars a year to borrow.
Yeah.
And, uh, they are the ones that have done so much of the training stuff that we all used to go to. I mean, when I first came on here, we went to Savannah, Calhoun Gardens, all kind of great places.
Yeah.
And Gaza has these workshops and they have some drinking and some other stuff going on there, too, which is good. I mean, she's not out of town anymore. But, uh, I just renewed this year's membership and I was hoping that the lady in our office would print that out. I wonder what she printed the same.
Is that something that, uh, that they promote?
Oh, yes. Let me tell you, when I, like, the first time I ever met Mute and Dabley, was when he was teaching at one of these workshops. He wasn't with it, the lady that he's with. I'm trying to think who he's with. Another attorney. I'll tell you, he is the best thing that this county has.
I tell you what, he showed his talent.
And
No zone hit.
I thought last year, I said they were trying to replace him. When they brought him in, I told they're not going. I said, oh, they won't be. I said, that's and you've got somebody who's got the history. It's always been over. But, yeah, I think everybody that we're joined, and I've got some membership applications. I didn't bring them with me, but, uh, I'm gonna pass them out. I think it's a good thing to do and it will give my leverage to make connections on continuing the education.
Well, I think, yeah, that could be. Yeah.
Have you had a good week?
A reminder for those that wish to speak on whatever item the signing sheets are back there to sign in, so.
What is that? Futuro Road in Tompkins. Supposedly that this whole area has been graded off, but I haven't put anything in that there.
Futuro in Tompkins. I don't know. I don't know if it looks like that. Uh, wait a minute.
I'm asked about every day what's going on and I, I didn't know anything about.
Oh, off at Jackson?
Yes, Jackson and Futuro, Futuro.
Check with Steve. I think I said Georgia Power Substation. I think. Yes. That's the Georgia Power Substation.
That's a good company. They have reasons.
There are three entities that do whatever they want. Georgia Power, the railroad, and GDOT.
Oh, yeah?
Can't stop them.
I saw that the ownership was, uh, was Georgia Power.
Yeah, that's a, it's a substation.
Where is it? Tell me, treat you in the way.
It's Futuro, Futuro Road in Rock.
Something between Jackson, too.
Yeah. I said a friend of mine asked me today, and I'm on board of the Jackson with what was going on there, and I said, I don't know. And so they went and pulled this.
You got a transmission line right there, so it's somehow related to that.
It is.
And I don't know what size land it is. And I don't know what is that. It's probably natural gas.
I don't know. But this is setting to it for credit right there.
So, yeah, they've
Why do you use that much, why do you get that much space?
For the future, because, I mean, it used to be the minimum size for a substation group to like so they've got something in mind somewhere. Now, they do sell land, but it's very rare.
Oh, yeah?
Very rare. I used to work for them, that's why. Not, not that group. Yes.
I got in a good contact with, um, pro-engineering. I talked with, uh, Carol Coleman. If you remember her, she was the, uh, head of model. Okay, she's doing stuff for them.
For pro, uh-huh. Airports, Carol.
And, uh, she, uh, gave me a contact. Well, then I've got some lines that have lots out there on, uh, Half Falls. It hasn't been acquired, but it is listed as possible future activity. You know, puts puts down some banks and banks. Thank you, John.
I don't see David's report in here.
She used to live up there in the canyon. She still lives up in the canyon.
She's in.
Good evening. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. This is the October twenty-eighth, October meeting of the Planning Commission, and we have a quorum. And so we will begin our uh, meeting this evening with an invocation led by Board Member Hargway.
Bless you, Greg. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for the many, many blessings you've sent our way. We thank you for the rain you've sent our way that we so badly needed. Father, we continue to pray for the people that's with the upcoming, uh, hurricane that's coming into Caribbean. I pray that you'll be with those people. Father, also now, I pray that you'll be with this meeting. Help us to maintain order and everything be conducted according to your holy will. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
If you will continue to stand, then we will pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I have just a little bit of a introduction for you all. First of all, I want to thank you for being here. We appreciate you participating in the activities of your county and we, we appreciate you being here with us tonight. We will be working together to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak if they should do so. Speakers must sign in prior to the meeting at the rear table to make sure that you get an opportunity and you can be called to the podium to speak. When you are called to the podium, we ask that you give your name and address and speak directly into the microphone and make your comments as brief as possible. You have three minutes for, uh, anyone who is speaking in opposition or, uh, from the audience in support. So, we, uh, want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak and personal disagreements with anybody who's individually here on the board will not be, um, allowed. We're going to ask you, uh, to give us an opportunity to hear everybody with equal opportunity as well as appropriate decorum. Outburst from the audience will not be tolerated. Board members during the meeting, uh, will have opportunities to ask questions and may call you back to the podium to make those comments. The, uh, common courtesy and civility is expected at all times during this meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes, and we ask that you not repeat, uh, the things that have already been said by your neighbors at too much, uh, in your comments. We will now move to the opening of the meeting. We have no old business at this time. Let's move to the new business.
Madam Chair, application number one under new business is twenty-five thirty-two V. In-house Real Estate LLC owner, twenty-five forty-seven Locust Grove Road, parcel two zero nine zero one zero three eight D, located in Land Lot seventy-six of the Second Land District, consisting of approximately thirty-one point three acres. The applicant is requesting a variance for the reduction of a required two-hundred-foot perimeter setback for an event center to one hundred feet.
Do we have an applicant represented here? Would you step to the microphone, please?
Make a motion to open the, uh,
Thank you.
Uh, make a motion to open the, uh, comments from the audience.
We make, we have a motion to open a public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second to, um, open the public hearing. Can we hear from, uh, David first? I'm sorry. I
No worries.
I, I got a little out of order. You can stay there at the microphone if you will.
Madam Chair, you have a motion in a second, but no vote.
A motion to, uh, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition. It passes to open the public hearing. Thank you. Mr. Allen, will you give us a summary?
Yes, just real briefly, uh, back on September thirtieth, this, a majority of this board, um, recommended approval for the special exception for the use of the event center. So tonight, we are just focusing on the required, uh, two-hundred-foot perimeter setback, bringing that down to one hundred feet. You'll see in your, uh, staff report, there's a drawing where there's a red area which is very slender and which would be the only buildable part of this. Uh, the two-hundred-foot buffer is still applied all over the property. Uh, it's pretty much non-buildable for most of the property. If that's the case, so hence they're seeking the relief down to the hundred-foot, uh, setback for variance for that.
Thank you. Now, we have the applicant to speak. Please give your name and address, and you have a maximum of twenty minutes total.
Good evening, Board. Darrell Johnson, um, JD Young Consultants, Atlanta, Georgia. And I have my client here, Dorothy Brown with In-House Real Estate. So, as David mentioned, we did present to the board last month, uh, in terms of the special exception and got, uh, approvals um, to move forward. We are needing the variance to move forward on the, on the, uh, on this case, and that's to reduce that perimeter setback from two hundred to one hundred. If you could present, I don't know who's controlling the monitor, but if you could go to the map area, go down to the site plan if you could. We are looking to
Probably that one, yes.
Um, not, that's the survey. Go to the next plan for me. Yeah, perfect. We are looking to, my client's looking to do a private event space, um, and, and we have a, a small quarters for, um, the groundskeepers and for small gatherings. We have some homes or residential lots that we've separated along the frontage. Um, and what we're needing here to make this happen is a variance along the perimeter, that north side. If you look, zoom in towards the, um, the facilities building, it's gonna be to the yes, yeah, the proposed amenity space, that proposed maintenance area, that proposed accessory dwelling that sits within that two hundred feet. We're needing that reduction on that north side, the east side, and the south side of this property to make, to make it happen. So, we're, we're trying to make sure that it's, it's, it's a, it's a dream come to reality for my client. We have given, paid special attention to the needs, uh, of the neighbors. The neighbors had some concerns going into this. We have revisited this plan. We have, um, tweaked it, reduced the amount of lodging. We, um, we've turned the event facility a certain way to make sure that the noise goes in a different, uh, direction. Um, we've, we're paying attention to the, the, the flood area. We're sensitive to that. And so, we, we gratefully ask for your favor in moving forward with this variance from two hundred feet to one hundred feet.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak regarding this application, uh, to represent the application?
Just to mention that I have, uh, spoken with several of the neighbors and some in the community as well.
Name and address.
I need to give.
I apologize. I apologize. It's Dorothy Brown, and the address is three zero three Grandiflora Drive, McDonough, Georgia, three oh two five three.
Thank you. Continue what you want to talk about.
So, I was just mentioning that I have taken the opportunity to speak with some of the neighbors, those adjacent, across the street, uh, and a little further down Locust Grove Road. I was able to obtain some signatures where they are not opposing our request. Some have verbally said that they would not oppose, but they were not willing to sign or speak. So I just wanted to, to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Are there any other pro-application speakers? You have any listed?
Ms. Ann Dawson? Yes.
Are you?
For or against? Right.
Okay. We will now move to those who, uh, oppose the application. If you would speak, come to the microphone and, and give your name and address, please.
Ann Dawson, two six five six Locust Grove Road. I am almost directly across from this property, and even though I oppose it even coming to fruition, I definitely would like to have it setback as far as possible. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all who have signed up for this application this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
My second.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Allen, will you present your staff report?
Okay, so like I said in the introduction, uh, you guys recommended for approval of the use, uh, without this variance, that approval was meaningless, so it has to, in order to move forward, you have to have the one-hundred-foot setback versus the normal two-hundred-foot setback. This is owing to the long, kind of narrow orientation of the lot, but mainly because you have to honor the stream and flood plain on the property, which takes up, uh, more than half of the back. So, just to, due to the nature of this property and the stream on there, um, you're gonna have to have relief in that setback. Uh, lady across the street, this would really not affect because most of the buildings are, they haven't changed layout from what they were last month, uh, but they are well off the road. I'd say probably over two hundred feet, maybe possibly three hundred feet from the road. So what we're really talking about is relief on the sides and the rear, uh, for this property, so. Staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from members of the board?
Now, who do we have property owners in the area where the buffer is gonna be reduced, I mean, where the setback's gonna be reduced?
So, well, most of it, if you look at the map, that site plan, um, most of the, the closest ones are to the north. There are several houses. It's not a lot of houses. There's a good deal of woods between those and the property. And then the hundred-foot setback, there are a good stand of trees on the property as well, so it's not a large amount of houses, as you can see, and there's a large amount of, uh, standing woodlands.
Do you know what's gonna be going on in those three buildings? We got here the proposed amenity, proposed maintenance, and then the, um,
Yes, the amenity building will have saunas and various things for the wedding guests, the maintenance building, obviously, the maintenance of the grounds, and then the groundskeeper will live in the, uh, dwelling quarters.
So that amenity building, that's gonna be quite more, generating more noise possibly than the other two?
No, I don't think so. It'll just be saunas and things of that nature. Nothing that's gonna be, uh, the actual gatherings. Those will be in the center buildings, the barn, and the other main gathering building, uh, which is closer to the lake.
And it's showing up in that red area now, I guess.
Yes, that is, that is your, with a two-hundred-foot setback, that red area is your very narrow buildable area.
Right, right, but I'm saying those buildings are located in the red area.
Mostly, yes.
Right, right. Cause I'm, I'd like to maintain a two-hundred-foot buffer at the south and the east. Cause I mean, uh, it looks like those are gonna be unused. Are there any plans for future development on the south and the east side?
Uh, you could go, I mean, the south boundary is pretty much irrelevant because of all the streams and, and ponds there.
Well, then, then why not go with a two-hundred-foot buffer there?
I mean, I guess you could. Um, it does hamper.
Cause to me, the only way to develop any of that, you'd have to come in from that south property owner.
The only problem with that is you, if you include that jagged piece of land coming off Locust Grove Road, those property lines, that's technically south.
Well, so the, the area in yellow, the, the two-hundred-foot buffer, and I could go around the clock.
You could say
Yeah.
along the eastern property line, two hundred feet, cause as you just said, there's not gonna be much going there anyway, and along the south property line to the pond.
Right. Well, and like, like that yellow line is drawn, um, for the east and the south, and then I guess it
You just can't go up to the main buildings. It would have to stop at the pond.
Right, and then I'd, I'd like to see that buffer rather than a hundred feet increased more, cause I, I am worried about the, uh, the neighbors to the north of that. I know it's dense woods, or we either say that nothing of noise would be generated from those three buildings, cause I'm
I really don't think it will. The maintenance building will store lawnmowers and stuff. The caretaker will live in that one building, but house by himself, and the saunas or whatever that are inside the amenity building will not be noise generating. Otherwise, they cannot be built.
Are there other, uh, comments from members of the board?
Yeah, I'd kinda like to go along with Mr. Bryant's recommendation on that.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion from the members of the board?
Now, is that for two hundred all the way around?
No, it's
Well, I'm, I'm, two, two hundred on the south and the east for sure, and I, I would love to see more than one hundred on that north. In other words, there's a, that north boundary is not approximately a thousand feet somewhere in there, cause tho- those, uh, property owners to the north of that.
I mean, you could have, keep it like that and have, you know, if it's lacking in trees in certain spots, you could have a planted buffer.
What, um, and maybe this is more back to the, uh, to you or the applicant. Are there any plans to remove any of those trees between the buildings and that property line?
Mr. Bryant, yeah, um, so, we, we're more than willing to make that an undisturbed buffer on that north side, uh, so that we're not tampering with any trees. Um, if we need to, you know, like, Mr. Allen mentioned, plant more trees or even put a fence along that north side, uh, just so that there's extra buffer, uh, two hundred along that side would really hinder us.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, that, that yellow line is, is clear, I understand.
Yeah, it would really hinder us.
Right.
And, and even in agreeance with him, on the, on the south side up to the existing pond would, would be, we would be more than willing to give you two hundred up to that pond and on that east side of that property if we're fine with that.
Cause I'm, I'm just thinking the yellow line that's drawn, say, coming south from the red area and then running east.
Yes, yes, outside of the structure. Yeah, yeah.
And then, so then on the north side, all that property between the structures and that property line would be undisturbed?
Undisturbed, yes, sir. We wouldn't be disturbing into the, 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 um, the building, we would stop our grading at that hundred-foot, um, uh, variance line, and we think we can build it without, without tam, tampering any woods and stuff in that area.
So that hundred feet would be the limit of your construction?
Limits of construction, that's correct, yes.
And you mentioned a fence.
Yes, actually, the fence is already in the plan because we did take that into consideration with the neighbors to the north. So, a fence will actually already be placed on the north side, and then I don't see us doing anything on the south, up to the south of that parcel.
Yeah, it looks very hard to access unless you come in from the, from the south side. Alright, so a fence along that hole?
The northern, the northern.
That northern edge, that property line?
Because the southern, the, nobody's gonna access the south. The east is already sort of encumbered by the stream. So that northern edge, that's what we're discussing, putting some type of privacy fence along that area. That helps with noise, too.
Alright. Alright, thank you.
So if there's no more discussion by members of the board, do I have a motion?
Well, I'll see if I can formulate this. Um, move that we have a two-hundred-foot buffer is depicted on the yellow line on the west, south, and east, and then on the north, um, to one hundred feet. But then there would be that, uh, limit of construction at that one-hundred-foot setback, undisturbed buffer along that whole property line, and then there would be a fence along that north line.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. To approve with stipulations. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? The motion is deadlocked. Arguing Terrence, can you tell us what we do now?
Uh, historically, that would be no action from the board.
Yeah, those are for the commission.
Correct.
It will move to the Board of Commissioners with no action by the planning commission.
Correct.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And for the applicant, both this, the non-action of this, and your special exception will be both on November twentieth with the Board of Commissioners for a final decision.
Thank you.
Just a question, I'm sorry, do we need to just re-revise the plan to show that, um, what we discussed in this meeting, just to kinda bring it to light?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Alright, thank you guys, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Madam Chair, application number two for consideration is twenty-five dash twenty-five Z seven fifteen West, um, Hall, sorry, WW Hall LLC owner, four, Sixth Street, parcel one-two-three-one-one-zero-zero-one, located in Land Lot two-zero-seven of the Second Land District, consisting of approximately nine point six-six acres. County initiated rezoning to restore Mill Village District overlay designation and associated standards onto this subject property per section four-one-four.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, you give us an introduction?
Yeah, we had heard this last time as well, really didn't come to a, a resolution on it, we needed more information from the owner, you know, potential new partner of his, um, let me say from the start, just to clear up any confusion, there was no, when this was approved, which is before my time, and I've been working with Mr. Lucas for quite a while, um, there is no deadline, time deadline to do what he needed to do on the property, that's not what was triggering this to come back before the boards. What was potentially at the time triggering it to come back was a potential new owner, a potential other uses on the property other than the tires, uh, talk of a couple of trucking things and possible, uh, mechanic school and some things like that. Um, talking with them last time, as you remember, they were talking about backing off some of the new stuff and just partnering to make Mr. Lucas's stuff that originally he wanted to do a reality. Um, I have since had correspondence with both Mr. Kane and Mr. Lucas, and we need some clarification in light, I know I do, about what the, the final, when the dust settles, what the final decision's going to be on this. Um, Mr. Lucas told me in an email last week or a few days ago that he's feeling a lot better and wants to see his dream realized, but I guess we'll hear from him again and see what we need to do here, if, whether there's a action by the board that's warranted, or is he gonna proceed on with, uh, the plan that we formulated back, I think it was October of last year, a, a plan just to focus on that one building for the tires, you have that letter in your packet where we came to that agreement, uh, to see if that's still the case, or there's something new, so.
Thank you, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Have a motion to open the public hea- hearing, do I have a second?
Don't move, I, I, I'll second it.
A motion and a second to open a public hearing, do we have anyone registered to, to, the applicant? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll get this right when I do. All in favor, raise your hand to open the public hearing, all opposed, there is no opposition, the public hearing is now open.
Yes ma'am, we do have, um, Mr. Marshall Lucas signed up to speak this evening for this application.
My name's Marshall Lucas, I own the property, uh, four, Sixth Street, uh, VT Tire, and, uh, we wouldn't be here tonight if I hadn't have got sick, I had a nervous breakdown and had three strokes, and I had been, and I hadn't been over there at all since March, and what happened is money kinda got, kinda got messed up and slow, and I was looking for other resources, uh, to help me. Mr., uh, Mr. Kane is a good friend of mine, and, uh, he, uh, he come, he's coming in as a partner, but VT Tire is, 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 is just gonna be what we agreed in, in the beginning, there'll only be tires, and we'll only use that one building.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in as, in support of the application? Having no one coming forward, we'll ask if there's anyone to speak in opposition to the application. No one signed up to speak. There being no others speakers, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Should move.
So a motion to close the public hearing, all in favor, oops, do I have a second? I have a second, do I have, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is no opposition, the public hearing is now closed. Can we have a staff report, Mr. Allen?
Okay, well, uh, since Mr. Lucas is on record with this board stating that we're proceeding with the plan from last year, I don't see any purpose in any further action or disadvancing to the Board of Commissioners unless Dr. Ledbetter disagrees with that.
Would you like to address that, Mr.?
I, I do not, um, the, the board had initially approved for VT tires to be the only, uh, opportunity for this property, uh, and I believe that, um, Mr. Lucas is indicating that that is the case, uh, and that will be the only opportunity for this property. Um, so I do not see that that would be, uh, um, any issue with the board.
Thank you. I have one question, Mr. Lucas, there's a lot of trucks parked on there, are they full of tires?
Some, some of them are, they're not all full of tires, but I, I, uh, I think I own about forty trailers, and, uh, I, I use them for storage, so, uh, that's, that's what that is, but, uh, uh, that's all that is.
They're there solely to support the tire business?
Yes ma'am.
That's a confidence I needed to hear, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes ma'am.
Madam Chairman.
Are there any other discussion by any other members of the board?
Mr. Harris.
Recommendation C, in, uh, what Mr. Allen, uh, has given us here, says all tires on site shall be maintained inside of buildings, no outside tire storage will be permitted, even if it is in a trailer, it is an outside storage situation, but if it is not in that building, how do we address that? Or can we address that?
Gonna have to monitor it with code enforcement.
And tires being stored outside in those trailers become a fire hazard, as was indicated just this past week in the city of Morrow, where they had a very large fire that most likely is still ongoing.
I'm just asking a question. Take your time, it's not a yes or no thing.
Mr. Lucas, I think he's asking you the...
I, uh, I had a stroke and my, my, my vision and hearing ain't too good, so you have to help me out a bit, uh...
Certainly.
So the question is, it, it, without the storage in the trailers, the specific item that we're referencing is that no storage of tires outside of the building, so it has been determined that anything outside of the building, even if it's inside a trailer, is outside of the building, therefore would not be allowed, so the trailers could not be used to store tires.
Oh, I see what you mean, well...
As per the recommendation from this board, if passed per the staff's, uh, report, would go forward to the Board of Commissioners with that stipulation.
Okay.
That's something that would not in, in, inhibit your ability to be successful in your business?
I mean, when you said no trailers, I think we would need to have, uh, uh, maybe, maybe five or six trailers, but, uh, uh, some of those trailers out there, I got furniture in, when I moved to Griffin, I moved out of the house, it was a little bigger than the one I got in Griffin, and I, I think four of those trailers has got furniture in it, so I would like for them to stay there.
It's not a matter of no trailers, it's a matter of no tires for trailers.
Oh, 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 okay, well, I told you my, mine ain't too good right now, but...
Understood.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
But, uh, I, I'll do, I'll do whatever is, is required for me to do, I'll put it that way.
Okay.
My question would be, what would be the difference in being a closed building in a closed trailer?
It was in a trailer, it's not in the building. And that's what we're trying to do, is to keep all of the stuff that's being conducted there inside the building.
Just Harvey, the answer to your question is the sprinkler system.
Okay, okay, I'll buy that.
Yeah.
If there's no more discussion by members of the board, do I have a, a motion on this action?
Ms. Ms. Chairman, may I clarify something? So when I, the revised staff report has a recommendation of this going to the Commissioners, that was written prior to the latest talks with Mr. Kane and Mr. Lucas, so I really don't think there's a recommendation for it to go any further than this board tonight, there's pointless to go to the Commissioners if it's gonna stay just the tire business, so I wanna clarify that. Yeah, and, Mr. Attorney?
What, what I would recommend here, if the position is that it's gonna stay VT Tire and there's gonna be no further action at the Board of Commissioners, the application here is actually for the rezoning filed by the Board of Commissioners, so if it is the will of this board that it remains VT Tire and there's not going to be action from the Board of Commissioners, I think the cleanest way to do this would be to recommend denial of the rezoning application.
Do I have a motion from the members of the commission?
Make that motion to deny for rezoning.
We have a motion to deny for rezoning, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second to that motion?
Okay, I have a question.
One more question?
Uh... What we're denying is going back to the, to the overlay, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna vote for that.
So we have a motion to deny the application to return to... The Mill Village overlay. And I have a second to that motion, all in favor, raising your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, the application passes. Thank you.
Do I sit down? I, I'm, I'm a little weak.
Yes, you're good, you're good.
Madam Chair, uh, number three on the agenda this evening, preliminary plat review for North Toa Laga Village node development, North McDonough Road and Amelia Road.
Mr. Allen, will you give us an introduction to this petition?
Okay, so this preliminary plat concerns the North Toa Laga development on the William Wilson property, which was rezoned back in March of this, this, this year. Um, so this represents the next stage in the, uh, process of the planning commission reviewing a preliminary plat, once that's approved, you move on to construction drawings, and after that, a final plat, but anyway, we're at the preliminary plat process. Um, plat was given to us over a month ago, it's been reviewed by various county departments, and the one I forwarded to you and Mr. Jacobs there has larger copies of, represents the fully revised, uh, preliminary plat based on my review comments and a couple other, uh, department's comments, uh, so I would recommend it, uh, to be approved based on that, um, it does, there was, as I detailed in my staff report, a few layout changes as far as some lots moving from where they used to be, however, the total number of lots, as was the, uh, part of the approval conditions, has not changed, it's still eleven thirty-seven house lots, so that number has not changed at all. Uh, GDOT did require them to, uh, reroute some or reconfigure some intersections, so they had no choice but to satisfy their requirements. Um, the road department, Public Works, had a couple comments which they have complied with, as well as mine as well, uh, but we'll hear from Mr. Jacobs to give you some more detail about that. And this is not a public hearing.
Uh, I was just gonna say, this petition is before this board as an administrative action by the board, so we will be happy to hear from the representative, but there will be no public hearing, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission members, uh, my name's Chad Jacobs, I'm here, uh, representing Minerva, uh, USA, I'm here along with John Bonanno, uh, so David pretty much nailed it, this is pretty simple and straightforward, uh, so the, uh, plat is extremely similar, uh, to the zoning application that was submitted and approved, uh, it has the exact same number of lots, uh, it has the exact same amount of commercial space and senior, uh, living area, um, it also completely adheres to the zoning conditions that were placed upon it, um, and as David indicated, as a result of the, uh, GDOT recommendations, uh, we did, uh, the only significant changes was as it relates to the, um, one fifty-five highway entrances, uh, into the development, uh, with the primary entrance, uh, moving to the north, uh, uh, to be aligned with, uh, the Chesapeake Bay entrance, so that's the lighted, uh, intersection there, uh, again, that was done in conjunction with GDOT, I believe, uh, Dr. Ledbetter, and TJ Blumberg with Director of Public Works, uh, was also part of those discussions, and everybody was in agreement with that, uh, and as a result, uh, with those realignments, uh, the, the internal layout of the road network had to change very slightly, and we also shifted the commercial area slightly to the north in order to be closer to that lighted intersection as well, but again, that's, that's it, that's pretty much it, it, it's completely adheres to the zoning conditions, uh, and like I said, it's extremely similar to the approved zoning plan, and we just ask that you approve the plat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Was there comments from members of the board?
We have some open discussion earlier about, um, the number of houses that have, uh, garages that are open and face the street, uh, would you like to comment on that?
Uh, from back into the zoning, uh, when, during the zoning process, is that you referring to, Ms. Harris?
No, it's not zoning, it's part of the discussion we had to begin with when we first took that...
That's what you're saying, during the zoning process?
Right.
Okay, uh, well, I mean...
It looked like at the time that a preponderance of certain nodes were going to have garages that faced the street, rather than being on the side or the rear.
Yes, sir. And that, that is correct.
So nothing's changed on that?
Correct, the, the house elevations that were submitted, uh, during the zoning process, and which are, are conditioned pursuant to the condition of approval, so like, those were the, the elevations that were, uh, a part of the condition of approval that we have to adhere to.
I don't think we required that the garages faced the street, I think we had a concern that too.
It was just a part of the elevations that were submitted.
Okay.
And so they're part of those, those conditions of approval that we have to ad- adhere to.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from members of the board?
Well, I just had a question looking through the, um, uh, report, and I mean, I think it's, I'm just, questions for clarification, that's all, um...
Could you speak more directly into your microphone?
I thought it was close enough, yep.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Um, on, uh, page one sixty-three in what we've got, um, and I did pull out the exhibit in the back about the wetlands, and it said, "Wetland areas shall be protected," and was just curious how those were gonna be protected, and then the cemetery, I did not see the cemetery, uh, located on any of the drawings, and I was just curious as to where...
So starting...
Clear with the wetlands.
Right, starting with the cemetery, it is on the southern part of the portion of the development, uh...
And I know that diagram where you've got the A, B, C, D, can you...
Right.
I'm using that maybe as a reference?
Cemetery is on this sheet, C two oh four, is marked out, delineated there.
Alright, got it, got it.
That and the wetlands, at the time of construction drawings, will be shown as, the wetlands will be flagged.
Right.
There'll be no grading in them. The cemetery, per our cemetery ordinance will also be flagged, there will be, uh, I believe, an orange uh, construction fence around it during construction, when the construction's done, it'll have a, um, easement and a permanent fence around it, so those will be addressed at the time of the construction drawings.
Are, are the wetlands gonna be, uh, part of any type of green space or?
Most of those, yes, are in the green space, yeah, most of those are already in contained within the large stream buffers you have, and then most of those are also in the green space part.
Which, there's an overabundance of green space.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we far exceed it.
I, I was surprised to see this wetland exhibit of the number of, uh, well, streams, I guess, streams and you've got some, uh, isolated wetlands too.
Right.
So quite a bit out there.
All the streams have the necessary perennial stream buffers, uh, along with the state.
Y'all will maintain those for, for perpetuity then?
But it happens.
Uh, that was all, I was just curious as to where.
Right.
Those were.
Any other comments by the members of the board? Do we have a motion from the board regarding this petition for approval of the preliminary plat?
Really, just on page one sixty-five, I, I would, I would make a motion based off of David's, uh, four points here, condition with the roadway widths, the lot widths, lot areas and rezoning conditions and notes.
And just with the timing of the staff report being prepared, those are now all taken into account with the revised plan that he has, so they've been fulfilled.
But we carry forth to, as our motion.
Yes.
If the maker of the motion has asked that the conditions for the staff be included in the motion, do I have a second to that?
I have a second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, this petition passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Madam Chair, item number four, application twenty-five twenty-six Z, John Shepherd, owner one twenty Airport Road, parcel one four two zero three zero two six, located in landlot one forty of the second land district consisting of approximately zero point four one acres, the applicant is requesting to rezone from R one single family residential to PDD Plan Development District for placement of a commercial driveway for an existing business to an adjacent parcel.
Do we have anyone to speak in favor of this motion?
We do, Madam Chair, there are three people who have signed up this evening, uh, if you would go into public hearing.
So we have a motion to, uh, open a public hearing?
Don't move.
I have a motion to open a public hearing and a second, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, we will now open the public hearing.
Want me to briefly introduce it?
Why don't you introduce it a little bit, Mr. Allen?
So Mr. Shepherd's, uh, existing business coming off of Zebulon Road is actually in the city limits, there's county property around it. He has had a problem, as he explained to me, with, uh, large trucks coming into his business there and coming in contact or almost coming in contact with a cable line that's overhead or in the way. He owns this property on one twenty Airport Road and would like to, was looking into the possibility of a commercial driveway going through it to access the property on the north side and avoid that, uh, situation with the, the cable wire. Uh, we consulted with, uh, county zoning attorney on this, he said it was possible to do and didn't necessarily have to annex it into the city, you could have this as zone in the county, that part in the city. He chose not to do the annexation route, uh, so he's trying to rezone this part. The city zoning is, I think, a PCD, it's a Plan Development Zoning. So the closest equivalent of that in the county would be PDD, the Plan Development District. It's a little bit of an unusual situation, but he needs to rezone that due to the fact it would be a commercial driveway. Um, also we'll hear a little bit later, item number five, which deals with two lots he owns behind the business, anyway, we'll focus on one twenty Airport Road for right now.
Madam Chair, there's three people who have signed up this evening, uh, it's my understanding that all three are in support, is that correct? It would be.
No, that is incorrect.
So for those in support, uh, if you would, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, good evening, I'm John Shepherd, I'm the owner of the business, my, my business address is eleven thirteen Zebulon Road. Um, I bought this property back in twenty twenty-one to run my landscape and construction business. And over the years, as we were bringing in equipment through with different trucks, they've hit my cable line multiple times, taken out my internet and keeping the phones down for days on end until they could get repaired. When I was able to purchase the property on Airport Road in twenty twenty-three, also with the intention of, uh, you know, hopefully being able to pull in this commercial driveway that would allow me to access the back of my property. Um, due to the limited road frontage in the city, I, I can't expand the driveway up there and then there's also uh, a creek that runs right behind my shop that, um, the, the trucks that I have brought in already have, have kind of started compressing the pipes, so I need to be able to come in from, from that side to bring in equipment, materials and, um, other, other items for my business. That's all I got.
Thank you.
All right, those in opposition, I believe it would be Angel Adams and Brian Adams.
Um, I'm Brian Adams, this is my wife Angel Adams, um, we reside at one twenty-three Bobalink Drive, but we're here representing, um, her parents who are elderly and unable to attend, um, they reside at one fourteen Airport Road, which is the property directly next to the one twenty. Um. The, as far as the concerns with cutting a commercial driveway in right there, um, I have a commercial license, I've been driving commercial vehicles for over thirty years in my profession. Um, Airport Road is not a good road to have commercial vehicles turning off of into a driveway right there. Um, I have firmly believed that it will cause more traffic issues in that specific area, having commercial vehicles coming in and out of that area. Um, the other concerns are, of course, noise and other things like that that are going to be generated by larger vehicles coming in right, right directly next to their property. Um, and also as Mr. Shepherd mentioned, there is a creek, the creek runs through that property as well, it'll have to be addressed. The same one that, uh, he mentioned that runs through the back of his property. Um. What else did I miss to hear? I believe that's pretty much all we have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, that's all who've signed up for this application.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Do a motion to move to close the public hearing and with second, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition. Um, David, is there more to tell us about this application?
Um, so it is true, uh, the lot is pretty much in terms of ever having a house, anything like that on it is unbuildable due to that stream going through, I do have a flood map, stream map in your staff report showing it going right through, so yes, if approved, and this would be just a driveway, um, it would have to be piped and all of that would have to be considered. Uh, if this was approved for that, so. That's all I have on it, I do have several approval conditions at the bottom of the report, should you choose to recommend this for approval. Will we read those for the record or not? All right. Should the board choose to approve the application, the following minimum approval conditions shall apply, number one, this property shall be used solely for the entrance and exit from the parent parcel on one thirteen, eleven thirteen Zebulon Road in service of the business registered there at the time of approval. Two, no storage of materials or parking shall take place on this lot. Three, you should maintain the twenty-five foot yard setbacks from adjacent residential parcels. For a driveway permit meeting all county standards shall be obtained.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the members of the board? I want to make one comment, uh, sorry, Mr. Brian.
I don't know.
Um, so they are allowed to do a lateral cross, uh, in a flood plain, uh.
Uh, would have to be piped.
Well, a lateral crossing with piping, but to get in there and do the work that's necessary to pipe it, will they be required to have state approval or any further beyond any approval by the, uh, Spalding County?
I'd like it the state to look at it, as I understand with most developments, you're allowed to have one stream crossing in a development that's as perpendicular to the stream as possible. Um, but I could, as a precaution, we could have the state look at it. It's not enough for a land disturbance permit, but.
Thank you, and my other question is having to do with the, um, was there any kind of buffer or anything that's required uh, to that adjacent property, we heard the people, the representatives for the, the neighbors?
So there is, um, and there again, this would apply more to the Oak Avenue ones we're about to hear, but there is a, um, drawing of it and there is a buffer on the back of the Oak Avenue parcels that should be maintained.
But not one here for that?
Not for the.
Driveway.
Well, it's, on this drawing, we mentioned setbacks, building setbacks, however, however, on his own drawing, he does have twenty-five foot required landscape buffer. So the board wishes you could certainly have, require some plantings between the driveway and the property lines if you approve this.
Could we hear from the applicant, may I ask you one question, would you step up to the microphone, please? Would you be amenable to putting some kind of landscaping in there to, to, adjacent to the, uh, that property that is to the, what is that, north?
Sure, that, that's no problem, I mean, it's, uh, in, in my line of work, it's just trees, so yeah, not, not an issue.
Just something to absorb a little bit of the action.
Yeah.
And one more question, is there a, a, I did not notice a requirement or a request, uh, to, uh, improve the road bed for Airport Road at that place so that it would be, tolerate the larger trucks with that weight, is that anything that's a concern by our public works people?
Uh, a lot of times it is, I'm not sure however where that work would stop, I mean, this is a driveway coming off. Um, so I'm not sure where you would end the enhanced paving of that.
I guess about my sensitivity is that there's a lot of roads in our county that we have signage that says no truck, no through truck traffic.
I did check this one, there is no through trucks, or there's not a no through truck zone on this part of Airport Road, so. Probably ought to be, but.
I wonder if should there be? That's just a comment, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question, presently, how are the trucks getting in there now?
Very tightly through the, through the front entrance, um, we.
They're the front, on the other road?
On Zebulon Road, right across from.
So this is gonna be a different access to the property?
That's right.
Right, may I add something, if the, if the event that triggered this application is the damage to utility wires, why don't you just have the utility wires raised up?
Um, I, I've gone a couple different ways with the utility company, one, uh, Griffin Power will not put my, I'm sorry, Comcast will not put their, uh, wires underground because my overhead electric wire is, is above ground. So they, they have to follow whatever, uh, whatever the, the power wire is.
No, I wouldn't suggest you go underground, I'm talking about getting a higher level on the, I mean, they do that all the time, I know I've got.
Sure, I've, I've asked and I've, I've gone as high as I can with it, um, so my, my other option was to go to Griffin Power, they won't put it underground for me, so therefore my cable wire can't go underground either.
So they won't, Griffin Power won't do anything to raise it higher?
No, I've already, I've already talked with them about it, they, they can't, unless, unless I go through a massive remodel on my, my office to raise, you know, basically rewire my, my place and raise my mast another ten feet, um, that, that's just not an option. I've, I've also gone through, uh, the DOT and expanded my driveway to the maximum that I can without getting into turn lanes and all these other things, um, so this is the best option for me as a business.
I think it's a terrible place to have large trucks going in and out, you've got all of that traffic coming in and out of the airport. Uh, I go that way four or five times every day. And the traffic on that is horrible, and if you put freight liners or Max or whatever is doing your stuff coming in and out of there, it is gonna be nothing in the world but snafu.
Well, it is, it is less traffic than Zebulon Road, which is my, my only access to my property right now. So I would say, take that into consideration.
Yeah, I just think it's a bad idea right there and if, I'd be glad to intercede on your behalf to help you get that poll raised, if that would work, I just think.
It still doesn't help me on the, the width of my driveway on Zebulon Road, I'm still only limited to, to the forty foot driveway that I have. And I need, I need to be able to get the trucks in and out.
So it's not so much the utility wires, it's the width of the driveway?
It's, it's a combination of both and I, I feel like I've, I've done my due diligence and, and the items I could prior to, to go in this route.
Okay.
Now, excuse me, but, but on this plan, it shows a proposed drive of twelve to fifteen feet wide, so you're saying forty feet is not big enough now, but you're only proposing maximum of fifteen?
Well, the, the driveway itself would be your, your standard twelve to fifteen foot wide, just like a highway.
Right.
The, the entrance would need to be wider in order to make the turn, sure.
Well, yeah, 'cause I mean, the only way I would be in favor of this is having an X cell and D cell, 'cause Frank's exactly right, that Airport Road is quite busy and I can't imagine a tractor trailer turning in there with the way it is now. And then, so when, how many trucks are you talking about per day?
It's, it's usually not per day, it's a couple a week.
Well, but what size, I mean, dump trucks?
I mean, they're, they're full sized trucks, sometimes it's dump trucks, sometimes it's full, full sized eighteen wheelers, I mean, I get, I get stone deliveries, I get equipment deliveries.
So that'd be a lot of wear and tear, 'cause that's, is that a county road at that section?
Yeah.
I mean, the only way I'd support that would be an X cell and D cell and then paved, um, to support that weight coming off the existing road into, into the property.
Yeah, but those lanes would, you'd have to go through eminent domain to get those, would you not, because that's somebody else's property over there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harwick, I'm, I can't, could you speak into the mic, I couldn't understand what you said.
He's got a hundred foot right of way and then he owns the property to the west. I mean.
Let's hear from Mr. Harwick, it's coming.
Uh, my, my thing was is, uh, if you talk about, uh, D cell lanes and, uh, that would go into somebody else's property over there, therefore you would have to go through the state for an eminent domain on that, would you not?
It would be through the county, this is a county, this is county road.
It's, it's a county road, it wouldn't have to go to the state, but it would be, it would require that he negotiate or purchase the appropriate amount of property to make it work if he can't do it within the right of way. If he could do, the, the pavement is not necessarily the limits of the right of way, so if, as, as he can do a D cell lane, um, in such a way to include his property or the right of way, then that would work, an X cell lane would be.
He owns a lot of frontage right there.
Well, I'm just trying to explain.
Yeah, and, but, and all, to me, all he'd have to do would be if, to shift the driveway further to the west, 'cause I mean, he owns one, two, three, four parcels right along Airport Road, this, this parcel right here being number one, you go to the west. Um. Right through there, yeah, there we go with tax. there, yeah, there we go with the tax map. Right. I mean, that is a heavily traveled road.
Any other comments by members of the board? Do I have a motion in regard to this position?
I would move to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second to that motion? Motion to deny fails for lack of second. Is there another motion?
Well, I, I, for, for talking purposes, if he's willing to put in an Xcel, Dcel lane and then pave it, 'cause I want to protect the county's asset of the road and then be aware of the, uh, ownership, I mean, the, the two people that spoke, uh, right to the, um, west of them, to the east of them, sorry.
Does your, your stipulation include the buffer that we discussed?
Yes.
Is that, okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
Yeah, a, a definite twenty-five-foot buffer on the east side and then paved entrance road with Xcel, Dcel lanes off of, uh, Airport Road.
We have a...
And then make, making sure that, uh, any streams there would not be impacted.
We have a motion for approval with the stipulations as enumerated by Mr. Bryant. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. A motion to approve as stipulated with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition, therefore this petition passes.
Were you opposed, Miss?
Me?
Yes.
I, I hesitated, but I, I voted to approve.
So a final decision on this for everybody involved will be on November twentieth in the same room with the Board of Commissioners at six P M.
Okay, the next petition, the force.
Madam Chair, item number five, application twenty-five, twenty-seven Z. John Shepherd, owner one-twenty-one and one-twenty-three Oak Avenue, parcels one-four-two, zero-three, zero-one-zero, and one-four-two, zero-three, zero-zero-nine, but located in landlot one-forty of the second land district consisting of approximately zero-point-three-eight and zero-point-four-one acres respectively. The applicant is requesting to rezon from R one, single-family residential to PDD Plan Development District for expansion of a storage yard for an existing business on an adjacent parcel.
Can we get an introduction to...
Yes, ma'am. Uh, same applicant, uh, same business. However, if you look at the red stars there on the map, these two parcels that Mr. Shepherd owns on the end of Oak Avenue, he is looking to rezon those as well to PDD to match, closely match the city zoning he has. He would expand, uh, storage yard for the business he already has out there onto those parcels. Um, if you've been out there to Oak Avenue, the, it's a cul-de-sac. Uh, the paving for the cul-de-sac, uh, stops at that lot that's to the west of the, from the most red star. So the, uh, property itself in terms of pavement, actual pavement, is not accessible by Oak Avenue. Uh, nevertheless, in the approval condition, should the board choose to approve it, um, I have addressed that in those. First approval condition is this property should be used solely for the parking and storage in conjunction with the business use of the parent parcel. No access should be permitted onto Oak Avenue by any trucks or whatever. Number two, there should be a twenty-five-foot wide buffer along all shared property lines between residences and the subject lots where no storage or paving shall occur. And in three, the existing perimeter vegetation along the fence that's already out there in the shared property lines between the residences and the subject lot shall be preserved. So, I guess we can hear from the applicant again on this separate, the separate lots from the one-twenty Airport Road.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition. The public hearing is open for the applicant, please.
Uh, yes, ma'am, just going back to the, the same property as a business.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. You have to, it's just a matter of...
John Shepherd, uh, working address is eleven-thirteen Zebulon Road. Uh, so as my business has grown, has my need for space, uh, in that area. Same thing, we bought this property in twenty-one. Uh, these two lots were already included in the purchase of the property. Um, I've, I've, you know, done my best to not encroach onto those, uh, you know, for business purposes without going through the proper process as we are today. Uh, I've kept all that into the city, so, uh, all I'm asking is that we, we can change the zoning over to, to match the current city zoning that allows me outdoor storage of equipment, um, trucks, materials, the things that I use to, to operate my business.
Thank you. And do we have anyone who speaks against this petition?
We do. We have, uh, Brian and Angel Adams.
Hi, I'm Brian Adams. This is Angel Adams. Uh, we reside at one-twenty-three Bobolink Drive. We're here representing the interest of Wayne and Pauline Harrison, who reside at one-fourteen Airport Road. The main concern with the expansion of storage is going to be the increase in commercial traffic, um, the increase in noise, um, and anything else that comes along with the, the increased storage facility and bringing more increased traffic into that area, especially if the driveway is allowed from Airport Road. It, it just seems to go hand in hand that there's going to be more traffic coming in and out if there's a larger area for more storage.
Excuse me, could you speak directly into the microphone?
I'm sorry. Um, Angel Adams, one-twenty-three Bobolink Drive.
Thank you.
Um, so if he, the one-twenty-four Airport Road is owned by him also. So my thing is, is can't, why can't the driveway like go on the other side and then you won't have to worry about the stream if he does do that onto Airport Road? Sorry, I don't do public speaking. I'm so nervous.
That's perfectly okay. We, we appreciate you coming.
But, so you got the, the, the two, you got one-twenty-one, one-twenty-three Oak and he's going to be doing the big commercial vehicles coming out of there. So why not have it go to one-twenty-four, I believe, is Airport Road on the other side of that one-twenty Airport Road?
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. We have a second?
I see.
We have a second to that motion. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition. The public hearing is now closed. David, would you present your report?
Uh, nothing further. Again, is, you, you can see from the, um, pictures I took on there, there's already vegetation in a fence, uh, lots he owns, has no houses on them, is basically vacant and encompassed by a part of the fence already on the one lot. Uh, it would be that way on the second lot as well. Um, is, you know, I don't have a problem with it as long as, of course, this guarantee there's no trucks or any vehicles with the business whatsoever coming down Oak Avenue, 'cause the pavement doesn't even go that far, so.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the members of the board?
Yeah, I, um, Ms. Adams brought up a great point of moving that driveway further to the west to avoid even that stream, 'cause just looking at the, um, oh, this exhibit prepared by Terrace Services, I'll call it the survey here. The elevation contour is here four-twelve. It looks like a low point. And if you move the drive further to the west, it could avoid that and then come directly into this, to these two parcels, 'cause I, I would worry about, um, extra noise through there, um, for parking the trucks. Um, 'cause now Oak Avenue, is that a right-of-way that's showing that, I guess that's needed right-of-way available, but it's not paved?
Right. The cul-de-sac does not go that far, but it, in theory, the right-of-way goes all the way to the end.
'Cause I would, I would be worried about that, uh, being used as a, um, exit or entrance.
Yes, that, that would be a, that would be a definite no-no.
I wouldn't want any trap, that Oak Avenue as narrow as it is right now and having, um...
That, that's totally off the table.
Okay, just wanted to bring that up. But that may be a solution, just move the drive further west, avoid a lot of issues 'cause it's all Mr. Shepherd's property. I'd encourage you to talk with your engineer, whoever's going to do that.
I appreciate your comments. I think the petition before us is the use of the two properties that have address...
Right.
On Oak Avenue?
Correct. But getting access to that, sure.
I think getting to them is an issue, but we need to talk about the two lots.
Yeah, and I don't see anything wrong with David's, uh, recommendations.
Are there any other comments from members of the board?
Yeah, I hate to see us just shut that whole road down and you've got some people still living there. You've got commercials on in, on the other tail end of it coming this way. Uh, I'm just not comfortable doing that. I mean, we changed a lot of zoning on people where folks live and we say, well, deal with it, but that's not the oath that we took when we was born in.
Could we see the staff recommendations again? I can't find them in my notebook.
This, this is kind of like my dad when I would come home with some crazy ideas as a teenager. He would say, we don't do that. And I would much prefer as a board that we do take the residential property on us into consideration.
Other comments?
He needs with a special exception or something other than rezoning. Rezoning is like forever.
Are there any other members that have a comment?
It does bring up a question of what would be allowed in a, in a planned development district? If, if Mr. Shepherd should decide to...
I mean, the, the predominant zoning here is the city zoning, so the parent parcel in the city, if that chose to be a, a different, um, business or owner at some point, that would be up to the city. Uh, you could put them here, as you probably have in the past, that this rezoning is for the storage use, the storage accessory use only. If you want.
Yeah, 'cause the, the PDD, and just looking at, at, at one of these exhibits, excuse me, future land use map, this is on page two-nineteen. I'm guessing all those parcels along Airport Road in, in, in that lighter color are in the PDD?
Well, it's a PCD in the city, the purple.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the county's part.
Right. I mean, you could, you could restrict it just for the particular use he's talking about, yes.
Would that satisfy your concern, Frank, of just being limited to his use for storage only?
Um, it would be better than not restricting it. I know that, I know the Harrisons, I've known them for a long time and, uh, you've got First National on one side and then, um, do what y'all want to do.
So that would be a fourth condition if you so chose.
Okay, and if you get into complaints about the way the, uh, storage is being handled in there, uh, we, we want to hear about it.
Do I have a motion on this petition?
Well, I'm, I'll make a motion to, um, add that, um, PDD portion just be restricted to Mr. Shepherd's use only for storage of, um, well, it is, I don't have that in this, in this book here. Um, storage is, is limited, is limited in David's, uh, staff report, it looks like on page two-twenty-three.
So for clarification, that would be a motion to approve with staff recommendations and, and the condition that it be used for storage only?
Correct. And that be the only allowable use? I don't have page two-twenty-two.
And I'd like to say if we get any complaints about the storage situation over there that , uh, code enforcement needs to know that.
We have a motion on the floor.
Wait a second.
I see. We have a motion on the floor and a second, uh, per the motion to limit to storage only. Approval with limiting to storage only. Am I correct, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Charlie.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed?
But likewise, this will go in front of the Board of Commissioners for a final decision on that same November twentieth.
Next agenda item?
Agenda item number six. Application twenty-five, sixteen S. Brother Gothra LLC owner, Harmoni Towers LLC agent, thirty-four, thirty North McDonough Road, parcel two-zero-one, zero-one, zero-zero-one G, located in landlot one-forty-seven of the second land district consisting of two acres. The applicant is seeking a special exception to place a cell tower on the property.
This was tabled at the request of the applicant.
No action by this board?
Item number seven. Proposed text amendment to Appendix Four, zoning ordinance of Spalding County, Article sixteen through nineteen pertaining to necessary corrections, clarifications, and improvements to uses and standards in certain portions of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, uh, this was first reviewed by this board back on the September thirtieth meeting. Uh, Mr. Ballard and Mr. Bryant had some written, uh, adjustments to it. I made those adjustments, uh, Mr. Bryant in the last day or two has had a few more minor ones, which you, I think, all got copied in the email. I do have them here. I can do these several minor other ones he has, uh, very quickly. Um, so I would recommend approval of the revised, um, text amendments for Article sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, uh, with the stated changes. This is a public hearing, however, again, so.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second, thank you.
We have a motion and second to open the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition, so we are now in the public hearing.
Madam Chair, no one has signed up for this portion of the public hearing.
Okay, we neither have pro nor against. So, Mr. Allen has just given us an introduction. Is there any additional comments? So Mr. Allen has just given us an introduction, is there any additional comments?
Yes, you have to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Motion and second to.
I'll second that.
Close the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand, all opposed? There's no opposition. There are any comments by the members of the board?
On what?
On any of the com, on any of the, on this petition, on any of the articles sixteen through nineteen. Outside of any communication you've already had with Mr. Allen where he's included your comments as part of his presentation.
I'm good.
You're good, thank you. Anybody else have anything more to say in regards to these code sections?
Yeah, my my comments, sorry, the way they came through, but I fired those off as soon as I reviewed them. Which was before the meeting today. And I and I just noticed some things maybe trying to get it improved a little bit, um. And that that one question about an amenity area, I couldn't find that identified anywhere except in another ordinance, so.
Okay. And as far as all the different pickleball variations, I'll just put war equivalent.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Okay.
You know, sometimes you get in a roll and you.
Oh, I'll take that back, I'm not good. I want to thank publicly Dr. Ledbetter for making sure that we have Mr. Allen at our disposal. I've been on this board since nineteen eighty-nine and we've never had anybody on here that did a better job at what he does than Mr. Allen. And I would like to make that as a public statement and, uh, I'm sure that everyone on this panel agrees.
Is that a motion for a raise?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, as in raise your hand, yeah.
A second, a second.
No, but David, I think we are blessed to have you.
Thank you.
I can, thank you, Mr. Harris.
As do I, I agree.
All said.
So we have.
As a point of clarification, if you do motions for recommendation on these tonight, they will have to be each article in the article motion.
Okay. So the first would be for us is do I have a motion to approve as stated for article sixteen?
Some move.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve per article sixteen, per the comments made. All in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition. Do I have a motion, now do I need to do As and Bs with this, or can I do article seventeen as whole?
You need to do As and Bs, there's distinct districts from each other.
You're gonna have to help me out, because I don't have them listed here, so.
We got seventeen A and B.
Okay, article seventeen A, per the comments submitted and discussed, do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? For article eight, seventeen A.
I see.
I have a second, motion to approve and second, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition. Do I have a motion regarding se, article seventeen B?
Some move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Seventeen B?
Seventeen B.
Seventeen B. Uh, I second that.
I have a motion to second seventeen B, uh, to appro, approve article seventeen B, do, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is no opposition.
One to eighteen now.
Do I have a motion regarding article eighteen?
Move to approve.
Do we move to approve as per comments submitted?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition. And article nineteen.
Move to approve with comments made?
Have a motion to approve per comments. Do I have a second?
I see.
I have a second, all in favor, raise your hand. It all opposed, there is no opposition, it also passes.
Madam Chair, next up on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of the meeting minutes for the meeting held on September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion to, um, do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
Some move.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the September thirtieth meeting, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition. Are there any other comments or personal items of discussion that any member of the board would like to entertain?
Yes, I would, if you don't mind.
I don't mind, please speak directly into the mic so I can hear you.
This is my certificate of membership in the Georgia Association of Zoning Administrators. I've been a Gaza member ever since, uh, nineteen ninety-five, I believe. And they have been very instrumental in formulating the continuing education workshops that have been done. Uh, I have an application form for everyone on this panel that would like to do so. Uh, I should have had this done in an eight by ten format, but, uh, the lady who does my secretarial stuff. Did it as exactly as I sent to her, which is about two by three. But, uh, I'm a Gaza member, uh, when I first came on, we had workshops, uh, in St. Simon's, we had them in Savannah, we've had them in Callaway Gardens. Uh, the first time that I ever met Newton Galloway was when he was a speaker at one of these workshops. So, uh, I would just say that it's something I have enjoyed being a member, I should have worn my Gaza sweatshirt tonight, but, uh, I deferred. And, uh, I would encourage all of the membership here to consider being a member of the Georgia Association of Zoning Administrators. I think it would be worth your time.
Thank you.
Well, I had a question directed towards that, uh, new business application, uh, item six.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bryant.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, um, application six for new business about the cell tower, and I know it was tabled. But as I was looking through the notes, it, Mr. Shepherd's property, who was here before, he had his, one of his parcels. Set aside for a cell tower, and what happens, can those be? In effect, zoned for a cell tower and never built on, would those be subject to revision clause? Cause it, cause what I saw this case is we've got two cell towers close by. And what happens if the one that happened in the winter doesn't build, does that stay on the record and prevent? Excuse me, prevent another tower from coming in?
I think they have every intention of building it, but, uh, you basically brought up why they tabled, because in our staff.
Right.
In their report to us, they had their coverage, I was like, okay, well, you're not taking into account assuming this one on Gainer Road is built. So that's why I had to go back and readjust.
But are those in some type of database out there for the, cause.
The ones built are, um.
Yeah, but like.
I'm not sure how it works with one not quite done yet, I'm not sure of how they access that information, but I did bring it up to them, so.
I I'm just curious, because if if they could do preemptive zoning to keep a competitor out, I mean. And then would would a revision clause be appropriate for, cause I only found one in one ordinance that I've lost my reference for.
Reversion clauses are used only for rezoning, it's not a special exception, I I guess unless you made a special approval condition.
Right, and I didn't know with cell towers if those were.
They're special exceptions.
Yeah, I know they're special children anyway, so, just just to comment about how how that transpired of two competing sites, so.
I'm thinking the reason probably possibly that he might have, uh, taken that off the agenda is because I noticed in it when I read the. Uh, report that he had not done his due diligence as far as, uh, checking with the people around and also with the.
Contacting the other towers.
Right, oh, exactly.
Uh, so I'm thinking that he might have tabled, uh, to get that due gill, due due gill, do gill, forget it.
Homework. Anyway. No, I I echoed Frank's sentiment about David, it's very good to work with and he's always on top of things and I I do appreciate his leadership in getting us through these ordinances, really do.
Oh, have a good staff too.
Yes, staff, staff kudos over there too, and the ones that are not here.
Appreciate that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
A mercy to adjourn, all in favor, raise your hand.
I second that.
I need a second, sorry. Now, all in favor, raise your hand, thank you. The motion to adjourn passes, we are adjourned.